I'm reading yours, Montreux, everyone. It's been cold. It has something to do with the humidity, like the rain.
Two weeks.
I'm a little... You know Jimmy Tom? Jimmy Thomas.
It's next to him. No, it actually does. That's what's strange, yeah.
Thank you very much.
It's looking over at the bulk department. It's looking where Bill's at.
That came up in one of my favorites. This thing is inconsistent. Some of the things that are on my phone show up on the iPad and some of the things.
Are they connected?
I don't know. It's a new architecture construct.
I'll call to order the regular meeting of the Lake Charles Harbor and Terminal District for January 24th, 2022. Everyone, please stand. Dear Lord, we ask your blessing on this board and port and the people who depend upon it. We ask you, God, this board and our decisions, that they are for the good of those we serve. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Darbo, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on the issue of the God indivisible, the Lord, and the justice for all.
The board encourages public comments and questions regarding all agenda items. Persons wishing to do so should complete a speaker's card, which is an entrance to the boardroom. When speaking or asking a question on an agenda item, one should, in addition to completing the card, come to the microphone, be recognized, provide your name, address, and phone number. Comments by individuals will be limited to three minutes. Okay, the first item we have is the approval of the December 2021 minutes.
Will we make a motion to accept the minutes of the December 2021 meeting?
Second. Ms. McCleary moves. Mr. Prudhomme, second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Motion carried. Submission 2022-01. Mr. Self.
Yes, sir. On staff request, the board commissioners grant the executive director authorization to enter into a contract with Wiser Security Services to provide supplemental guard services at port facilities. Late last year, Cameron requested quotes from three companies that provide guard services. Two responded. Wiser, the Wiser quote provided the best value for the port. During 2022, we budgeted about $245,000. We'll continue to fill the guard services of some of the spots that we have supplemented by Wiser.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve submission 2022-001.
Mr. Darbo moves.
I'll second.
Mr. Lorenzi, second. Any discussions, questions? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Motion carried. Submission 2022-02.
Yes, sir. Staff request the board commissioners to authorize the executive director to enter into a professional services agreement for engineering services with Peridian Engineering Services to provide design services for the industrial canal warehouse repairs. Peridian was contracted to perform an inspection and assessment of BG Warehouse located in the industrial canal. Based on Peridian's work that they did on the assessment, they were asked to provide a quote, and based on their extensive knowledge of the building, to provide a quote for engineering services. They provided one at $116,000, and we're requesting authority from the board to move forward with them.
Motion.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt submission 2022-002.
Okay, Mr. Prudhomme moves.
I would second that.
Ms. McCleary, second. Any questions, discussion?
Nick, is this the first engineering work that they've done for the port?
They've done some smaller projects, but yes, sir, this is the first. I just, I actually, I'm glad you asked that question. I wanted to add that they were, the last round of qualifications we received for the Shed Seven project, they were ranked number two. Myers &amp; Associates was the first. They won that one, and then this was the second one.
No questions, no qualms regarding qualification?
No, sir. They're very qualified, and they've, based on their, there's actually two assessments they've done on the building. A very detailed, or I'm sorry, preliminary one, and then a more detailed inspection on the second one. I think they're very qualified.
Any other questions? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Motion carried. Submission 2022-03. Mr. Self.
Yes, sir. Approval is sought to enter to a purchase agreement with the Shattuck family to purchase their parcel along Salier Street to facilitate the Salier Street rail relocation. As you'll recall, years ago, the port agreed to spend up to $1 million to move the rail, which is currently on the, I guess, the south side of Salier, to the north side of Salier. DOT will pick up the tab after the first million dollars. We've already acquired the Graft parcel and the Dunahoue parcel in 2021. Shattucks have agreed to a price of $597,000, $597,981.
Ricky, where does that put us on our outline?
It's approaching right at a million right now. Once you add that to the Dunahoue and the Graft piece, it's right at a million dollars. So, once we get to a million, we'll continue to spend money, but we'll get reimbursed by DOT.
Mr. President, I'll move for submission of 2022.
Mr. Prudhomme moves.
I from 003.
I second.
Mr. Darbo, second. Any questions? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Motion carried. Next item is the briefing note on executive director's expenses.
Yeah, I think the biggest item here of my quarterly expenses relates to the registration for the ADPA conference. Other than that, it's just cell phones and things like that.
The DBE briefing note.
Yes, each year, the port sets goals for disadvantaged business enterprise. The 2022 goals are set at $500,000 for the new warehouse at City Docks, $400,000 for the reconstruction of Shed Seven, and $175,000 for the Salier Street rail relocation. And just, and to give you a little bit of background, so far in '21, last year, the Shed Seven demo was awarded to Keeler, one of the DBEs. The cost was about $218,000, and then we spent another, about $979,000 on some of the other DBEs, not necessarily on contract, not necessarily on construction projects, but on other projects. But these are the goals for 2022.
I have a quick question. The companies that are on this list, how are they, how are they eligible?
Is it DOT? Do you think it's strictly DOT's determination?
Yes, sir. The ones listed on our, this actual briefing note are from our region. So, we just go through and sort by our parish, or multi-parish region and select those just for display.
But in order to get on this list, they have to apply to DOT?
Yes, sir.
DOT maintains the list.
On the construction contracts, Nick, when you issue them to use, put it in as a requirement or just as a goal of these projects?
They're, they're goals in their contracts.
Okay, so they're not, they just have to make the effort. If they don't make it, they don't necessarily have to comply with the percentage, the general contractor.
Yes, sir, but they have to show to us their best efforts. So, we require them to submit documentations where they solicit it out, showing that they tried to make a best effort attempt to get these credits.
And for the disadvantaged business, it doesn't necessarily have to be from the five parish area. It can be anywhere that's a certified DBE or WBE.
Yes, that's correct.
Any other questions? December 2021 financial briefing note, Cameron.
Yes, sir. So, for the month ended December 31st, 2021, the port generated revenues of about $4 million, which was favorable $200,000. Again, due to the new long-term agreement with Talorian, higher lease revenues associated with Lake Charles methanol. We also received a fee for bond, the bond closing for the, in connection with the administration of the revenue bonds for G2X. And we, we had multiple minimum annual tonnage shortfalls that we also billed at the end of December. Those are minimum annual guarantees that are billed if the tonnages aren't reached or exceeded. Partially offsetting that was lower baywright tonnage and lower wind component activity, which we mentioned in the last meeting. Expenses were around $2.7 million, which was nominally favorable, due primarily to lower expenses associated with those lower tonnages and offset by ongoing hurricane needs and recovery expenses. Appreciation was $1.2 million, which was favorable $100,000 due to the timing of completion of some of those hurricane projects. Non-operating revenues and expenses were $6.5 million. That was favorable $6.2 million, primarily due to the COVID relief funds that we received. I mentioned that in the last meeting. Those were issued to us by the state. EBITDA was $1.3 million, and cash flow was $7.7 million, primarily due to that $6.2 million that we received in COVID relief funds. Under the balance sheet, unrestricted cash investments increased $8.2 million. Most of that's due to the insurance proceeds that we received throughout the year and the COVID relief funds that I mentioned. And offset by hurricane payments, property insurance premium, reservation of the SIR for our property insurance, and our contribution to the P3. Restricted cash went up $9.1 million, and again, that's funds on behalf of the P3 and the reservation of our SIR. Trades receivables went up $5.5 million. That's primarily due to the FEMA receivable. I'll send y'all the breakdown of our trades receivable, and y'all can see how. That's roughly $10 million, so it's good. Fixed assets increased $12.4 million due to the completion of some of the hurricane projects. Construction in progress is up $4.3 million due to hurricane projects. And long-term debt decreased $1.2 million due to the principal payment outstanding bonds. Any, any questions?
No questions. Move on to the administration, finance, and security.
Yes, sir. I'm gonna take a look into that $10 million in FEMA receivable. So, currently about $32 million, and I passed out the report done by CSRS, Glenn. Currently about $32 million is, of the 115 in damages in projects have been obligated by FEMA, so they're now in GOSEP's hands. It's only about, it's about 30%. After the allocation of insurance proceeds, our 90% reimbursement would be around $11.7 million, of which we've received $1.2 million. A majority of that outstanding receivable relates to large projects. So, just so everyone understands, there's small projects, which are anything below $131,000, and those are not based on reimbursement. So, as soon as, as soon as we submit all the information, those go through GOSEP, they're reviewed, approved, and then they can pay it out. On the other hand, there's large projects, anything over $131,000. For those kind of projects, we're, we're required to submit requests for reimbursement after those funds are spent, meaning that the total receivable is not simply available to be drawn down because the portion relating to larger projects must be spent before they can pay it out to us. So, we, we're working every day to get those requests for reimbursement done as we spend the money. So, once we spend the money, we submit a request for reimbursement, and we can start getting that, those large project money.
Is there a, on that note, since the money's being drawn down for FEMA and GOSEP hasn't, is the timeline quicker on the larger projects for receiving it than it was in the beginning with these smaller projects?
It, it really depends on...
Since the money's already sitting there?
Not really. GOSEP's process is very slow, to say the least. So, even when we do submit those requests for reimbursement, they take a while to go through their process and make sure everything is right and done correctly, and so I would say no.
It would seem like since it's pre-approved and the work's done and you've spent it, it ought to be a matter of...
Theoretically, yes.
Theoretically, yes.
Submit the invoice and get paid.
They're doing a full review on them again, essentially.
Any other questions?
So, so basically, what this is saying is that we have submitted, and basically, it's been approved for $31 million. Is that, when it says PW total, those...
That's the total of all the projects that have gone through FEMA's process, and it's at GOSEP.
And it's at GOSEP.
And some of that has been, like, the smaller projects, we've been paid for some of those small projects, which is part of that $1.2 that we've received. And then the remaining receivable, which is around $10 million, is mostly larger projects that we have to submit a, a request for reimbursement to start drawing that.
But of that $31 million, there was $18 million of that that was paid by our insurance.
Insurance, correct.
Which leaves this $13 million balance that's sitting at GOSEP.
Right, and then our, our receivable part of that would be 90% of that 13, so that's where the split is down at the bottom.
Eleven point six.
Right, correct.
Of which we've only received...
One point, roughly $1.2 million.
So, a year and a half later, we've received $1.2 million.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Navigation, Channing.
In addition to my monthly report, I'd like to give you all a view of the, like you, the three pots of federal money sitting out there that's been in, in the news recently. The first one is the Supplemental Hurricane Damage Fund. That was basically for Hurricane Ida, which impacted southeast Louisiana, so there were no funds in that for southwest Louisiana. The bipartisan infrastructure bill had a lot of funding in it for the Corps of Engineers. This was part of the money that Governor Edwards was talking about a week or so ago on the, on the news, $2.6 billion. A lot of that came through the Corps of Engineers. There were, there's only one southwest Louisiana project included in that. That's to raise structures in hurricane-prone areas. There is more money, that's a, that, that bill, the bipartisan infrastructure bill, is a five-year bill. So, there's money coming out this year and in the four remaining years. So, even though the channel nor the port itself, Lake Charles Harbor and Terminal District got any funds, there's still a possibility to get some funds from that bill from other sources this year or from the funding of the, the four remaining years. The last funding bill that we have an interest in right now is the FY22 budget. That budget bill is still under consideration in Congress. We had a conference call with the Picard Group this afternoon. It's, it's looking like that final bill may come out on the, somewhere around the, the 18th of February. It looks like it's gonna get pushed back a little bit to conference. The, the continuing resolution expires February 3rd. If they need to do another short-term CR to, to get all their i's dotted and t's crossed, they will. We would hope that in that bill, there will be some discretionary funding for the Corps of Engineers that we can participate in. We got $20.5 million in the president's budget. The full capability for the Corps of Engineers for our channel was submitted at about $63 million. So, we're hoping to get some or all, probably not all, but some of that remaining $43 million to come to the channel through the discretionary funding that's usually included in a, a budget package. Whether or not that happens remains to be seen, but we're in contact with our, our delegation folks, letting them know that we still need money. So, that's the situation as far as federal funding is concerned. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer that. Thank you.
So, you think there might be $20 million strictly for this ship channel in the president's budget?
There is $20 million, $20.5 million in the president's budget for Calcasieu. There may be some additional funding coming our way. Congress in the past few years, ever since they did away with earmarks, are giving, is giving the Corps of Engineers discretionary funds. So, we go up there and fuss and fight for, for our share of the discretionary funds. We can use up to $43 million in discretionary funding. Likely, we won't get that amount, but we hope to get some portion so that we'll have funding of $30 to $40 million for the channel and FY22.
Right now, it's $20.
Yes, ma'am.
Have we, have we met with the delegation on discussing what we're talking about right now?
Yes, sir, we have.
And their thoughts?
Well, I don't have any insight into how the congressional negotiations are going on the budget. So, I can't answer that question. But, but they are aware of our needs. They get our begging-for-bucks. We had our conversation with them last year. We talk with them periodically, so they're aware of what our needs are. And then the Picard Group is staying in contact with them also.
Any other questions? Operations, Todd.
Yes, sir. Past month or so, we've handled at City Docks, we've done five aluminum hydrate barges. Currently, a lumber ship is being discharged right now that has about 55,000 cubic meters of plywood. It should finish up probably tomorrow or the next day upcoming at City Docks. We've got a aluminum hydrate ship and a barge. We've got two lumber ships, about 40,000 cubic meters of lumber, and possibly a Dominican Republic side-load bagged rice ship. They haven't confirmed that yet, but they're working on it. At BT1, we unloaded 20,000 tons of pet coke for Alcoa, 20,000 tons of rutile for Louisiana pigment, and loaded about 18,000 tons of calcine for Philip 66, and unloaded two barge, two ships of baywright totaling about 60,000 tons. On the schedule coming up, at BT1, we've got two more baywright ships, which is gonna give us about 120,000 tons of baywright in the first two months of the year, which is about half of our budget, so that's pretty good. And the pet coke for Alcoa, we've done, we're gonna end up doing about 50,000 tons in the first two months, and we budgeted 30 on that, so we've blown by that budget as well. So, we've got two baywright ships at BT1, Coke ship, I mean, a Coke ship for Philip 66. It's gonna be about 40,000 tons. We're gonna unload another 30,000 tons for Alcoa. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
I guess the question is, is, does it seem like we budgeted low, or are they just front-loading?
Well, on the baywright, I think, I think it's just the econ... Well, on the bayright, I think, I think it's just the economy. It's, it's, it's moving, you know, better. The oil and gas industry is moving, and that's what the bayright is used for. So, they, they shipped a lot of bayright at the end, right at the end of the year, in November and December, and then now we're, we're picking up these two ships early. I mean, we budgeted two hundred and forty thousand tons for the year, which, you know, typically they would do one, a ship in the, at the height of their cargo shipments. They were doing about a ship every other month, but that, they haven't done that in several years. So, but two hundred and forty thousand was a good, felt like a good number to start the year, you know, for the year, and so.
Has there been any insight given prospectively?
No, sir.
Okay.
So, but we just hope, we hope it keeps coming.
Amen. Cargo and trade development, there.
Yes, Mr. President. We recently released a press release on the rough rice industry and the exports to Lake Charles. We're also gonna have a story, a story on KPLC, which will release sometime this week. Also, we'll be featured in the Landy App Business and Industry Update Magazine this month. It's gonna highlight the local and national impacts of the ship channel economic study. And also, we've been in conversations with the rice mills on a potential commercial rice shipment in February and possible another one in March. If you have any questions.
Any questions? Engineering, Nick?
Yes, sir. As you can see in my briefing note, all projects are progressing. With only a few minor hiccups due to material delays, but nothing that's drastically changed the schedule. We're continuing, as Channing mentioned, to monitor all the federal grant opportunities. A few of, or one of them has already come out, and we anticipate a few more notice of fundings to be coming out in February. And then, also, I just wanted to talk about maintenance. They're doing a great job keeping up with our demands due to the limited workforce and even, which is even further impacted due to COVID-related issues these days. And also, last year, after the big freeze, we had a lot of damaged pipes and everything, and so because of that, facilities maintenance team created and implemented a freeze protection plan and for all of our water and fire systems throughout the port. And I'm happy to report that these last two freezing conditions, we had no impacts, no leaks. It, it worked great, so I'd like to extend my thanks to those guys and give them some kudos to the maintenance team, so. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
With all the multiple projects, there's no hiccups have surfaced that give you any grief or heartburn?
Well, they, they always give me heartburn and grief. Really, just the, the delays just due to, you know, your standard weather delays that we tried to build into the contract, but material delay has just been the biggest one. And honestly, it's for the smaller repairs, like the BT one dock improvements where we had timber delays, pressure-treated timbers that we use nowadays. That's been a big issue for us, just getting those in. But also steel, there's like walkways and those kind of items. It, that's an issue as well. Rebar hasn't been as bad, so the bigger construction projects, they seem to be doing well, okay, so.
Everything appears to, looking forward, staying within the budget?
Yes, sir.
Cost estimates?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Lobbyist report, is there anything to add there, Rick? Okay, any other matters to come before the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion for executive session. Ms. McCleary moves.
Second.
Mr. Lorenzi, second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Go on into executive session.